Ready? Go ahead.
Yeah, but I don't like the options. That's what I don't like. I don't mind getting no...
Call the meeting to order for a Maryville Town Council meeting for April 28, 2015, at 6:30 PM. The invocation will be from Reverend Calvin White from Faith Movers Church. Please rise for that and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord God in heaven, I call upon you this evening because you are God, our heavenly Father, our Maker, and our Creator. Father, I pray blessings upon each and every heart that is assembled here this evening. I thank you, Master, as you continue to bless the mind of each town council member here, blessing their minds with your wisdom and your knowledge. We thank you, Father God, that this meeting goes forth this evening, that it will be done decently and in order. And Father God, knowing that the ultimate goal of the town council is that the town of Maryville will be served with the highest quality of care, continue to bless us all, Lord, for it is in the mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Spann?
Yeah.
Miano?
Yes.
Barrett?
Here.
Pettit?
Whiting?
Here.
Rojek?
Present, five present. Petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. I have something from Liz Buscemi. She said a note along that the Historical Museum has a small table display honoring Officer Nick Schultz. She sent a picture along about the display, and she said the museum is open on Sundays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM through October, except for the holiday weekends. We hope you'll stop by on Sunday to visit. Also, at this time, note that Mr. Pettit has arrived.
Hi, Mr. Rojek.
How you doing, Sean?
All right.
And the swearing-in of the following officers, Christopher Davis and Ian Foltz. At this time, I would ask that the family, if they want to take a picture, they can come up here, take a picture as they're getting sworn in. Take whatever the best pictures you guys want to take. We'll move out of the way to get you guys the best pictures that you want. This is a special time in their lives, so feel free to come up here, anywhere you want to take a picture. You're welcome to take a picture.
You know, since we have one policeman in the back there, why don't you two guys come up here, and you guys in uniform, stand in the back. So, if you guys will, stand in the background like that. You two guys come up here, new guys. Yeah, you two. Anybody who wants to take pictures, come up. You guys get over here. Stand right here by the flag.
All right.
Fisher?
Joe?
Hey, Bruce?
Hi.
Ian?
Ian Foltz.
Oh, really? Get as close as you want.
Get closer, you guys, while you get closer. Try to get the policeman in the background. This is unusual when they show up.
Sneak in there, Karen. You want to get...
(Inaudible). Make sure to give four names. That will support the Constitution.
That will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution is the medium.
And the Constitution is the nation.
That will fully.
Partially.
Partially discharge. And I am discharged. My duties as.
My duties as.
Police officer.
Police officer.
For the Maryville Police Department.
Of the Maryville Police Department.
Town of Maryville.
Town of Maryville.
According to the law.
According to the law.
Best of my skills.
Best of my skills.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the finest group.
(Applause)
Right away from IU. Okay. And then, uh... Oh, look at that. That's just good. Thank you. Make our way over there. Well, yeah. Thank you. Go over. Are you? I gotta go shake my hands.
Go ahead.
Yes, I'll help.
Where at? Oh, the bright colored shirt, yeah, it is. Shantel Harris.
Yeah, we got Grant, Doug.
Moving on to the consent agenda, the accounts payable registered voucher approval
for April 28, 2015, and the approval of the town council meeting minutes for April 14, 2015.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Whiting, for the approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Standing committees, budget and finance, Mr. Pettit.
Uh, I have no report, Mr. President.
Public Works, Mr. Span, do you have anything, Mr. Spires?
Um, the only thing I would hear is, and excuse your understanding, it's not on the agenda. We're gonna need a meeting next week.
I can't hear you, the microphone's not on.
We'll need an RDC meeting.
Okay.
At 6 o'clock before the next scheduled council meeting.
Okay.
That's it.
That's all you have?
Yeah.
Okay. Council affairs, Mrs. Miano?
I have no report.
Personnel policy and employee benefits, Mr. Pettit?
No report.
Public safety, Mr. Whiting?
Um, I don't have anything. Do you, Chief?
No, we just, we've four or two officers. They both have the police academy. They'll start work on the FTO training meeting tomorrow, and we have three officers graduating from the Northwest Indiana Police Academy on Friday, so they'll be starting Monday morning on FTO, and hopefully everybody will be out on the street by August at least, or August or September.
You know, children, the perfect time to get these guys out, the summertime. You know, the more policemen out on the street in the summertime, the more support of time.
We've been receiving our new cars. There's one parked out front. Gentlemen like to see it on the way out. That's the fourth one we received so far with non-taxpayer funds. As you all know, that's funds generated in the police department, no tax money used on purchasing the squad cars or the equipment in the squad cars.
Very good.
Outstanding cars. We've had a good winter with them. They're all built here locally, you know. We're staying with local cars. They're Ford plant over here in Illinois, and a lot of people give us compliments when they stop the guys. They'll say, hey, I built the seats. You know, I worked on the car. I assembled this one. So, they all know what cars they are. It's part of being a big family here in Northwest Indiana.
That's good.
Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Miano?
I'd like to refer to Chan, if there's any report.
Good evening. I just have a couple of items to report on tonight. Tomorrow in the Times newspaper, eight pages of our programming block from the Parks brochure will go out to 2,700 subscribers in Maryville. And then, on May 6th, the programming block will appear in the circular and hit 14,469 homes in Maryville. So, aside from our printed brochure, we're gonna get the programming block out to everyone in a 46410 zip code. And I recently applied for entertainment permits for the parade and the concerts to be held at the Prusen Center. And I met with Chuck Gardner the other day, and we're moving forward with the new playground at Wordis Park. That's all.
Anybody else in Parks and Recreation? Seeing none, environmental affairs, Mr. Lake has a few things on there.
Yeah, we've got, well, the first is an agreement between the town of Maryville and Maryville Stormwater Utility for labor for maintaining utilities' facilities and constructing small drainage projects for the utility. Essentially, an agreement between us and Public Works. Works out logistically better to do it as a contract as opposed to how we've done it in the past, so this would need your approval to move forward.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit for the approval of the agreement between the town of Maryville and the Maryville Stormwater Utility for labor in maintaining the utilities, facilities, and constructing small drainage projects for the utility. Second by Mrs. Barron?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The other item is a grant of easement between us and Calumet Park Cemetery. This is the area where our box culvert is to be constructed from the east side of Taft, extending from the existing pond that we constructed there, all the way to their pond, which is essentially Kaiser Ditch. It's gonna entail a 15-foot permanent easement along with a 30-foot temporary easement during construction.
See, on this one, discussion.
And this would also need your vote.
Motion to approve, Mr. President?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Barron, for the grant of easement for the stormwater sewer ingress and egress and surface drainage to the town of Maryville Stormwater Management Board on behalf of the town of Maryville, Indiana. This is gonna be the last and final thing to finish up the tax project. This is, once this is constructed, everything should be ready and done over there, right?
That's correct, yeah.
You know, it's been a long time coming. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The other item is a grant of easement between us and Calumet Park Cemetery. This is the area where our box culvert is to be constructed from the east side of Taft, extending from the existing pond that we constructed there, all the way to their pond, which is essentially Kaiser Ditch. It's gonna entail a 15-foot permanent easement along with a 30-foot temporary easement during construction.
See, on this one, discussion.
And this would also need your vote.
Motion to approve, Mr. President?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Barron, for the grant of easement for the stormwater sewer ingress and egress and surface drainage to the town of Maryville Stormwater Management Board on behalf of the town of Maryville, Indiana. This is gonna be the last and final thing to finish up the tax project. This is, once this is constructed, everything should be ready and done over there, right?
That's correct, yeah.
You know, it's been a long time coming. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Matt?
That's all. Well, we just finished up a small drainage project at the northwest corner of 73rd and Taft. You'll notice that the ponding by the cemetery no longer occurs, so that has been fixed, and we'll no longer see any issues there on that corner. So, that's all I have.
Elections and public relations, Mrs. Miano?
During the month of June, I am working currently with two companies that do hearing aids and hearing aid assessments. We will be opening the doors where the Comcast Computer Center is now for possibly free hearing exams and possibly free hearing aids or hearing aids up to $200. They're a non-for-profit company that are two counties away from us, and they were looking for a site. And I was very fortunate to have our backroom for them. So, in June, hopefully, we're gonna be offering hearing aids for low-income or anyone with a gross salary of $29,000. And that is my report.
Anybody else in their elections?
Uh, Mr. President, I was given a note and a picture that maybe I think Dorinda might be able to address as well.
Oh, you did announce this?
Oh, you did announce the display, Tom?
Display, under Communications.
Okay, all right. Never mind. Thank you.
All right.
That's what happens when you come late from track practice.
Yeah, there you go. Economic development, Mr. Pettit?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Obviously, there's a great deal of activity at 30 in Mississippi. The landscape has changed dramatically out there with the demolition of the old Wicks Building, Ashley Furniture getting ready to start. 73rd Avenue, as we know, through the Historic District is under construction, as is Mississippi Street. A lot of activity going on, and there'll be some other activity later on and special exceptions from the BZA with regard to Handy Andy, which we've all had our eye on redevelopment-wise. And according to our town manager, we need to call a redevelopment commission meeting for 6 o'clock, two weeks from tonight, Bruce?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, RDC members, note that on your calendar.
Anything else on our economic development? Seeing none, utility liaison, Mrs. Barron?
The site is picked out for where two of the benches are gonna go, the seating area. And now, we're just, I'm working on getting the rest of the three benches' locations picked out, and we're waiting for... Kevin, go pick up the benches.
Yeah, we're gonna get the one bench through the solid waste district program, and then the other benches, we did on our own, which we'll pay, I believe it's 50%, but we'll need to go down and pick those up. We'll take the caps down and pick the benches up, and we'll do our, use our flatbed truck from Public Works to do that.
There'll be five additional benches then.
Yeah, so as soon as we can get the benches picked up, we can get the concrete board, get the benches put out there, and get a bike rack just put out there, and we got the landscaping all donated, so then we can do a groundbreaking ceremony out there.
Where's this at?
On Lakawanna Bike Trail.
Down on 91st and area Lakawanna.
I've had people request some seating around the trail at Prusen, so if we can work on getting...
Can you just start saving some caps for that? That cap program's not gonna end.
We got one going at Public Works.
Sure, please.
Are we no longer collecting caps?
We're gonna keep, the cap program's not gonna stop. We're gonna keep the cap program going. It's a very successful program, and it's a way to show the community, a way to get together to save for environmental-friendly products.
Okay.
I just, through solid waste, I think they're gonna do the program again, but the new...
I'm not really sure if the solid waste district is or isn't going to do the program.
No, I'm saying for next year. I don't know if they're gonna do the program next year because of new director.
I talked to him, and he said, I made a comment to him, or a request actually, that we need to start saving caps, maybe plastic bottles, toilet paper rolls, or whatever it is that we can, that's recyclable, so it doesn't end up in landfills, to get different products like bike racks, picnic tables.
If we buy these, I guess either to Bruce, Tom, or Chrissy, if we buy these in quote-unquote bulk, you know, we're still getting recycling funds, correct? That we use toward leaf collection, Bruce?
Yes.
I mean, we could earmark if we want in the coming budget to put in a contingency in the recycling fund. As Gene and I and Bruce prepare the budget, the committee prepares the budget, we can always set aside money to buy these if you guys can get a rate and say, hey, the town of Maryville is gonna buy five of these every year. What kind of discount can we get from, through solid waste or the manufacturer if we're using recycling funds?
But these are, from saving the caps, they're like free benches.
Right.
So, if you don't have to buy the benches, and you could save caps or bottles or whatever you need to save to get the recycling products, you don't need to set money aside in the budget.
There's just a few benches that we're gonna have to pay 50% of.
Right.
That's because we hit our limit with...
Right, yeah.
Yeah, back here.
Yeah, when I got my two.
We still had a lot more caps to...
Exactly.
...get rid of, so, yeah, by turning the caps, and it pays for 50%, so, they weren't much. I don't remember.
Benches are $400.
Yeah, that's what they were.
That would be our, yeah. They would be $100 each, with 50%.
Right. And if our deal stands good with what we had with Jeff, with the new director, which I think it will because we talked to him about it, then the benches will actually be lesser than that.
Correct.
Because he said, because if we can get, if we can get the caps to match the benches, he would match us with the price.
I'm gonna hold off on the dog waste stations then until the bench locations.
Yeah.
Because I don't want a dog waste station next to a bench. So, if I have the map of those locations, if they're already mapped out, then I can proceed. Otherwise, I'll wait until I know the benches are in.
Well, you can put, for one thing for sure with the dog waste, you can put one at the beginning of the trail. When you go through the tunnel, there's one there, but it never has any bags in it. But as far as the other one, I think that we should put it on the other side of the bike trail, where the, it's like the middle of the trail is now, where there's a drive to get in, but it's blocked off by the Sherival entrance. Put one across the street there. That way, you got one at the beginning on one side, you got one at another entrance on the other side, and then you go through the tunnel, and you got one there. We just gotta make sure there's bags in it.
Anybody else in the utility?
I caution when we say that, you know, anything other than caps saving, because, you know, they have limited space down there, and we put a burden on them with the caps. And if we start saving anything else, we gonna have to have someplace to store it. That's all. I just think that we just gotta be careful with that. I think it's a great idea, but we just need to have someplace to put it if we're gonna do that. Maybe the North Barn, we could put it, or something like that.
I think the North Barn would be a good idea.
Yeah, well, we don't wanna overburden stormwater with trying to store plastic.
I think it's a good idea.
Otherwise, we'll be in the plastic business rather than the real estate business.
Well, I think, I think that anything that is recyclable, and we could save to get products to show...
I agree.
...the generations, this is what you can do, and this is what you can get, and it's gonna help further their future.
We just gotta have someplace to store.
I think the North Barn would be a good idea.
Thank you.
It was, thank you.
Abandoned properties, Mr. Hardaway?
I'm going to defer my report till the 12th.
Okay. General orders, first reading. Ordinance 15-12, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, regulating hotels and motel occupancy. Mr. Topper's here tonight, and I know that he's put a lot of effort forward with this. Mr. Buscemi has put a lot of effort before with this. I've spoke with Spiros Baustado, said that he's behind us 100%. So... Motion to approve on first reading, Mr. President?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Whiting, for the approval of ordinance 15-12. Any discussion?
Obviously, in my ward, I've got a great deal of the hotels. Ron's got some of them up north. Wanna thank Phil and John for an outstanding job, guys. The problems we've heard about and encountered are absolutely unacceptable, and that's the media to Karen and Chaz. We're not gonna tolerate this kind of activity in motels and hotels in the town of Maryville. There's one or two or three bad apples that are giving the rest of them a bad name and a black eye, and we can't have that in town. We just can't. We have too many people come through here, businesses, conventions at the Radisson constantly. It's just unacceptable. It puts a stress on Joe's guys, on Ed Yerga's guys, and there's absolutely no reason for it. This is about being responsible business operators in the town, and that's what we want. And quite frankly, we should demand as a council, representing the taxpayers and the business taxpayers. So, again, John and Phil, thank you very much for this. It's unfortunate we had to come to this. We need some enforcement and some teeth for Phil in the courts. Kenny, I hope the courts, I hope judge will strictly enforce this now, from now on. Thank you, guys.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Gernsy. What? Excuse me?
What does that mean? Like, what does that mean as far as the ordinance?
It's, this is on first reading, so we're not taking any comment on the floor for that. We would take comment on the reading for, the discussion would be in the second reading. That would be in two weeks, but at the end of the meeting, you come up and, you know, state your name under public comment and ask questions then. All right?
At the end of the thing, we can talk to you?
Oh, no.
At the end of this meeting.
There's a public comment section that you come up and voice any concerns you have, but at this time, we don't take any comments on first reading ordinances.
Also, there's a copy of the ordinance at my office, clerk treasurer's office. If you wanna come in tomorrow, pick up a copy of the ordinance.
I'll speak at the end, thank you.
Roll call vote, Mr. Gernsy?
Yeah.
Miano? Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries six to zero. Second reading ordinances, ordinance 15-10, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, amending ordinance 1508 and fixing the park non-reverting program fees for the year of 2015.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Pettit, for the approval of ordinance 15-10. Any discussion? Seeing none? At this time, it's open for public comment on this ordinance 15-10. Public comment on 15-10? Any public comment on 15-10? Seeing no public comment, roll call vote, Mr. Gernsy?
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Miano?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Rojek?
Yes, motion carries six to zero. Resolutions? There are no resolutions. BZA action, petitioner Jim Witczak, owner Jim Witczak, special exception approval for a used retail vehicle sales facility at 79-7930 Whitcomb Street in the zoning of a C2 community commercial, case number Z8E2-0315. This is petitioner here, Mr. Witczak. Would you like to come up to the microphone, please? Okay. This is in my ward. We've taken a blighted building and turned it into something nice. We've had a lot of problems over there when it was the teen club roller dome. We don't have any loud music over there anymore. We have no more beer bottles being strewn among the streets over there. This gentleman has been an asset to the community, has taken a blighted building and turned it into something nice over there. As far as my approval, I can't make the motion, but I would suggest that somebody make the motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. President, for discussion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Hardaway. Discussion?
You're acceptable to all the conditions from the BZA?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll read the comments.
Yeah, my motion, Mr. President, would include the conditions for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only. All parking and displayed vehicles must be on a hard surface, and third, no repair of vehicles on site.
Is your second stand, Mr. Hardaway?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Dorinda, do you have anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're all approved. Thank you, Jim. Petitioner John DeWitt, owner John DeWitt, variance for use approval for the proposed trucking, moving, and U-Lock storage facility. Location is 6490 Broadway. Zoning is C3 Highway Commercial. Case number is Z9UV4-0315.
Motion to approve with the conditions.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mrs. Barron, for the approval of Z9UV4-0315.
You agreed to these conditions, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. President, this project's in my ward. Yes, I think it's a great idea. The old Handy Andy building has been a blight on Broadway. I welcome it.
Thank you. The old handy handy building has been a blight on Broadway. I welcome it.
Thank you. I just wanted to revert back to, uh, you guys had concerns for storage for your plastic caps. I might be able to help with that.
Well, that would be a welcome.
Does everybody know this, this was a blighted, uh, place and it looks like he's getting ready to make the place look a whole lot better, so.
Already does.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
John, what's the, uh, what's the front? I mean, it, it looks like this elevation is, is looking west, right? Into the front of the building off of Broadway?
That is looking east.
Yeah.
Correct. This is kind of a.
Looking east at Broadway.
Toward Broadway.
If you put the pictures together, you can kinda get a, an idea. That would be potentially like one color of the building itself. Or the option of two colors.
Okay.
Kinda split the building up, two different types of businesses in there and so forth. These are just ideas. Of course, we're open up any ideas for colors or anything like that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily, I'm not really worried about colors, council, obviously, you know, we know people can paint their houses and do whatever they want color-wise. I'm more worried about, uh, material and filling in and re, and or, you know, what is the facade going to look like? And, and the point being is, is we all know, the redevelopment commission awarded John a hundred thousand dollar facade grant, um, out of the Broadway Tiff. And, uh, you know, the materials that are being used, is it wood siding replacement? That's what's out there and then repainting?
No. The brick, the brick would be power washed.
Okay.
Resprayed.
Okay.
The, the rest of it, all the wood would be repaired and then replaced with metal across.
Oh, so this is gonna have a metal front across the front?
Correct. But the, but all the brick would be power washed, cleaned off and then resprayed. You kinda have an idea with a, if you look at, uh, the, like, the third page, have an idea on the different types of panels we're going to use. Similar to, um.
Oh, okay, the roofing, Baron roofing?
Correct. Similar to what you have, uh, just, just, just across the street, um, to the north, there's, um, a couple of other buildings similar to what we're going, going to do. Um, it's, um, I don't know.
MCD?
One is green and beige.
Yeah, the Caravelle.
Yeah.
And, and then you have another Fitzgerald is.
But again, you're gonna leave the overhang on the front of the building?
Correct.
You're just gonna repair it all and dress that overhang up?
Correct.
Okay.
It wouldn't look right without it.
Okay.
If, uh, anybody, uh, hasn't taken a ride by their, or went inside the building, I mean, your contractor's usually there during the day or whatever, I would suggest that you guys take a ride by there. They really, uh.
Go by it every day.
Yeah, I do, too. Stop in there.
We haven't done much on the outside yet. That's just on our next phase. We just have to get the inside done first and then we're gonna work on, start working on the outside soon.
Right. I mean, he's cut down weeds, everything up.
Yeah. Looks good. Looks good.
So, the petitions before us, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any other comment on this? The staff report on this, on Durinda?
There, there is a staff report.
I mean, uh, do you need to read anything into the record or anything?
Just the conditions.
Okay.
Would you like me to read this?
Please, if you could.
For this petitioner only at this location only for this use only, parking of semis, trailers, trucks, which are owned by raised movers, and outside storage of boats, RVs, et cetera, must be on hard surface.
You agree to these commit, conditions?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any more? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next petitioner is John DeWitt, uh, owner is John DeWitt, special exception approval for the purpose of rental of trucks and trailers. Location is sixty-four ninety Broadway. Zoning is C-three highway commercial. Case number is Z-one zero E-three dash oh-three-one-five.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mrs. Barron. Any other comments or?
That clue the, uh, condition, guys?
Yes.
Um, Mr. I get, John, what, what type of trucks and trailers are we talking about?
U-Haul, like U-Haul or something.
U-Hauls?
Penske, U-Haul, something like that.
Are they gonna be up against Broadway right away? In your parking lot?
No, sir.
Where are they gonna be?
They're gonna be just a little bit to the back, towards the side, up to the side.
Okay, I mean, just.
And how many are you going to have?
Uh, I, I gave you that. It, it, it'd probably a couple of each. That's what I'm guessing.
Okay.
Well, again, I, I guess visibility, guys, and, uh, you know, aesthetics on Broadway, he's putting all this money into the building and then, you know, offense, John, to clutter it up along, right up against Broadway in your parking lot, doesn't do us any good.
Correct.
You know, so, uh, I don't know, Durinda, if BZA considered, if you could live with a second condition, John, of X number, a maximum number of trailer and a M, maximum number of trucks. I don't know how you guys feel about, you know, what are we gonna have in the parking lot and what is it gonna look like if he's putting all this money in?
If he has, uh, extra, extra trucks, I mean, you wouldn't store them all up front.
No, these are just like rental, like, if you needed to storage space or if you needed, you know, to move your own items from point A to point B, it's, it would be like a rental truck, like a U-Haul truck or a Penske or something similar to that. It wouldn't be a semi or a bigger mover, mover truck.
Sean, the problem with that is, you know, if you see like two trucks, three trucks, we put a limit on it. The problem is, when these people, like, if it's a U-Haul, he, he'll be a U-Haul dealer.
Dealer, drop them off and pick them up, yeah, I know.
Five trucks dropped off.
I'm just bringing up a point, guys. The parking, the parking up against Broadway and, you know, as long as he's not parking them on Broadway, I don't care then.
Well, here's, here's the problem. We went through the same thing with the storage on the east side of, on Sixty-first Avenue and we went through the same thing with our storage on Seventy-third Avenue where they were, we granted them permission to start written trucks and every time you ride down Sixty-first or ride down Seventy-third, you can see them up front and that's what you're trying to prevent. And, and I, and I agree with you one hundred percent. We cannot have them where it's gonna be a eyesore for every, all your good works is gonna be in vain if.
Put them up against Broadway, yep.
Right. If you put them up, if, if people can ride by and see them because.
Set back off the side in, in the, the side section, not the very front bow trust, but set back off the side over there. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Okay. We don't wanna, we just.
You're talking about on the Dairy Ridge side?
On the Dairy Ridge side.
Okay.
Basically, what they don't want, they don't want between the building and Broadway, your first building and Broadway.
By the old sign or whatever you're gonna do with that sign, don't, yeah.
Filled up with gray or red.
Right.
And, and they don't wanna look at junk.
Right.
Right, that's, that's all.
Which brings up another question, John. Are you doing anything with the parking lot itself? Uh, seal coat?
We're getting, we're actually getting bids right now, seal coating.
Seal coating, okay.
Well, it takes a little more than seal coating because you gotta fix the crack repair and there are.
Yeah, okay.
Spots for patching and stuff like that, so we're in the process.
Been awhile, probably, since that thing's been touched, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. President, members of the council, this is a special exception. The approval, public hearing was held by the BZA, however, the approval authority is with you, the town council, and the council does pursuant to this discussion, you've just had, have the authority to impose any specific additional condition, uh, including conditions for trailer placement and, and trailer location. If you wish to do so as part of the approval of this special exception, what I'd suggest is if there's an additional condition, that it be stated on the record so that it's clear in the minutes when the minutes are approved.
This is this petitioner only?
We're gonna put a limit on it, a limit on the trucks and trailers, Sean, you know?
No, I agree with Gene coming in and out, but I would add a second condition if John's acceptable to it.
I think you're, you're talking about location.
Location.
Placement, location.
There's no, there's no trucks or trailers up against the Broadway right of way in the parking lot. You gotta keep that, that area clean. Put them back on the Dairy Ridge side, you know, just keep them away from the Broadway frontage.
Okay.
Okay? So I would add that condition, Mr. President.
You agree to that court condition?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
My motion stands.
My second stand.
Any other comment?
So the condition, as I see it, councilman, is no trucks or trailers placed up front along the Broadway right of way.
All right. Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
And then, uh, old business, any old business? Seeing none, new business?
I got something.
Okay.
And I've had this conversation with Durinda. That building, Durinda, that's on Six, uh, Fifty-seventh, it's in your ward, Ron, used to be the old, uh, uh, blockhouse or something, right where the Nickelodeon used to be. Uh, we've been try, we've been trying to find out what kind of business is there and Sean brought up the point when we were talking about parking trucks tonight and they've got, everything they've got is parked on the grass. Totally unacceptable. And I've been trying to get an answer and I guess now I'm demanding an answer.
Isn't that, uh, a tile pla, is it, what's the?
No, it's, no, it's not.
Armanetti?
It's not anymore.
It's not anymore?
No. It's, it's, it's been changed into something else by Friday. I wanna have an answer.
Is that the, you're talking about, you said Fifty-seventh?
Fifty-seventh and Harrison.
You're thinking of where our janitor's office was.
It used to be.
Our janitor's office, yeah. We tore down Nickelodeon video back in the day.
Right. Well, yeah, but they've, they've taken over Nickelodeon, the, the parking lot there, they made that a parking lot and they're parking all kinds of, there's three or four trucks right now parked on grass. Totally unacceptable by Friday.
It looks like a tree, uh.
There, there, a lot of stuff.
Yellow, I saw him.
Lot of stuff going on there and nobody can tell us what it is and we need to, we need to have an answer. And it's your ward, Ron, I apologize for that, but it, but it's right up against mine. That, that's all I got.
Anybody else on their new business? Public comment? Anybody have anything on their public? Kenny, uh, you might wanna ask them if they have anything to say, if they'd like to come in.
Looks like they have a sidebar out there.
Remember, they only have three minutes.
Thanks, Jim.
Public comment, yes? Please state your name and address for the, for the record, please, and you have three minutes.
My name is Jason Thomas.
What's that?
Jason Thomas.
Okay, and your address?
Seven thirty-two East Eighty-second Avenue. That would be right down behind Hooters right there.
Okay.
Um, this is in regards to the ordinance that's, I understand there's laws in place for this, but, you know, we're, my kids are in school.
Right.
My daughter's six years old. She's a, she's an honor student. Do I wanna be living there? No. But do I have a choice? No, I don't. I'm starting a new career. I just want my kids to finish school because one of the conditions is for them to finish school, so that's the address they have. You know, other than that, I don't really have anything else to say really nice about the place. I'm not gonna lie. I'm not gonna sugarcoat that place. It's, it's garbage.
Phil?
My family?
Is, uh, is the location this gentleman is addressing, is it a regular hotel motel short-term stay?
Yes. It is.
Deluxe Inn?
Is it Deluxe Inn? I didn't, I didn't connect the address.
I'm sorry, I should've, I should've clarified that, that's my fault. It is the Deluxe Inn Hotel. I worked for this man for the last four years until I started truck driving school.
Council understands your circumstances, however, those facilities are not constructed to fire safety code for long-term occupancy. They're designed only for thirty days or less.
Right.
And so this is a, this is a public safety ordinance that's designed for your protection, your daughter's protection and your family's protection.
Right, and I understand that, but, you know, I mean, I just want my daughter to at least finish the first grade, you know, and if we move now, they're not gonna let her finish the first grade.
Well, the ordinance isn't gonna go in effect in, till what, two weeks?
It'll be, it'll be enacted.
That day, that day forward, it would be, the timeline would start on that, right?
I still have two more weeks before I even start getting paid.
Mr. President, uh, he's referring to the violation notice that the hotel received.
Yes.
The ordinance that we're proposing on enacting, uh, is just strengthening the laws that we already have in place. Their hotels already received the violation on existing, uh, laws that are already in place. They were given a, roughly a May ninth re-inspection date to have everyone that has been living at that hotel to be out.
All right, then, I appreciate that clarification, then, if that's the case, Mr. President, members of the council, it's not relevant to the ordinance, that's an administrative enforcement matter that's been taken on by the fire marshal and enforcement action possibly through town court and I don't think the council members should take a position one way or the other on that particular issue. We certainly don't want to undermine our fire safety enforcement mechanisms that are, that are being implemented at this point.
At the same time, we don't want somebody to be homeless either.
Absolutely.
Right, and like, I've got three kids. I didn't ask to be there. Believe me, I did not. I lost my home. The only home I ever owned, I lost it.
Okay.
And that was because, that was because of the landlord, you know? He, he, after a year decides to just kick us out and decide he wants to fix the house. I offered to buy the house from the gentleman and he put us out and we've been in this situation because of him for this long. And now that I have a chance to get my family out of this, you know?
How, how long have you been there?
We've been there since just after Christmas of two thousand nine and I understand it's been a long time. You know, I'm not happy about it. I'm not thrilled to even be there. I didn't even wanna be there, but at the time, I didn't have no other option.
It was either.
It was either that or sleep in my car and have, and have it risk my kids getting taken away.
On the enforcement matter, I'd, I'd be open to potentially looking at granting them an extension until after the school.
I think the school year ends in, uh, June fifth or whatever.
Could we, Mr. Mr. Buscemi, when we do this on second reading, can we make this ordinance retro, or, um, effective as the general assembly does, July first? Can we put a date in there?
The issues being raised by these individuals, as verified by, uh, Mr. Topper, do not relate to the terms of the ordinance. They rate, they relate to an existing enforcement action that he already has ongoing there for violation of town codes.
The, the only problem I have, folks, and this is, this is in my ward, the only problem I have is that if we give this guy an inch, he's gonna take a mile. And God forbid, they had, what really started this up again was, Phil, three weeks ago, there was a fire there.
Right.
What if somebody would've gotten trapped and killed in, in one of those units? I've also heard horror stories from my fire chief who's not here, that people are knocking out walls in other hotels. Again, we cannot have that in Maryville. I'm sorry about the situation. We'll try and help you as best we can, but as Mr. Buscemi said, this is public safety, this is for your guys' best. We're trying to protect your daughter to get this guy to get his act together.
No, I.
And he's not listening, so we're gonna bring him in in front of court and unfortunately.
Like I told this gentleman standing here, I, I know what's gonna happen. This guy don't care about this hotel because he's got money. He's got more money than he does brains. You know, I've been to this man's house.
You know, I've been to this man's house. I've worked in his house, I've worked on his house, I've worked on his hotels. Worked on a hotel for this man in Ohio. You know, this guy don't care, you know? And honestly, I don't care what you guys do to this guy. I just want to be able to give my kids till the end of the school year, and then we're gone.
Can you give them an?
Council members, I recommend that you leave, now that everyone understands the situation, this is an enforcement matter. It doesn't pertain directly to the ordinance, that you leave the further enforcement resolution to the discretion of our fire marshal.
Well, let's see what the, let's see what the court say on the ninth. And then we'll be back here on the twelfth anyway. Let's see what the court say. Once we hear what the court say, then we can, if we gotta, if we gotta get our heads back together. The worst thing in the world is that we're gonna put somebody out on the street.
Phil, is May nine, is that a court hearing date? That's simply the administrative deadline for compliance, right?
I'm just trying to figure out.
That's not a court hearing date, council.
Uh-oh.
See, the problem I'm having here now is, hey, your daughter does graduate, gets out of school. What's next in your life?
We'll be out by then.
We'll be out by then. I'm starting a truck driving career.
So you're gonna have a job, you're gonna have someplace?
I have two more weeks of truck driving school to go.
If you guys need help, you know, there's certain things in town. You got the Ross Township.
Trustee.
But they told, I tried that. They told me no because I wasn't considered a resident because I lived in a hotel, so they wouldn't help me. I've tried that. I've tried three different places here in Lake County, and everyone turned me down.
All right, let's, let's back up a second, Phil. John, if you don't mind, Phil, administratively, they've got till the ninth to comply, correct? So what happens after the ninth?
We can find them, we can check out the hotel.
You can go back out there and talk and inspect this guy and?
Thirty days.
And give him another thirty days, we could go to June ninth, John.
The main plan was to potentially close the hotel if they're not compliant. I could, after the meeting, work with their legal counsel and discuss potentially extending that deadline until June, so that way.
If, John, if he doesn't, if this guy doesn't comply by May ninth, can, can we instruct Phil to shut it down June fifteenth? Or is that something Gene has gotta do through the court?
It's not.
Obviously, our court administrator's back there.
It's not within the authority of the town council to instruct the fire marshal specifically in detail how to enforce the fire safety code.
He would have to, he and.
Believe it should be left to his, left to his discretion.
Phil, you would recommend a date to shut it down? I mean, again, I agree with.
You can let him know your views so that the fire marshal understands.
You hear the flavor, I guess, of what we're going through. I would recommend you strongly look at June fifteenth and use that as your benchmark if this guy doesn't comply by May ninth.
Another alternative is, is to relocate to a code-approved long-term stay facility.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but is that economically feasible for them?
I don't know.
I've followed around for one extended stay, was thirteen hundred a month.
Someplace that they can afford.
But actually, while I'm there.
We put another hardship on them, then.
I work there to pay my rent, that's how I stay there.
And that's exactly.
Because if I didn't work there, I'd have no money to go.
I go along with what Sean said, let's talk to the judge and see if we can get this thing. The absolute drop-down date is June fifteenth.
Do we have, Phil, do we have the name of his attorney and the name of the other hotel's attorney in question?
I'm sorry, sir.
Do we have names of the attorneys that represent these two hotels?
At least the Deluxe Inn.
At least the Deluxe.
Phil's already been in communication with that attorney. And Nancy Townsend from our office has been advising Phil on this enforcement matter.
Okay.
And I wanna add too, if the fire inspector goes out and decides that he's going to go forward with issuing the violation to shut it down, because they have a business license, they have to go in front of the town manager for the suspension or relocation of his business. So that can take another thirty days.
So there's gonna be, if you guys are here, there's gonna be some time. It sounds like we can get you through the school year.
And that's all we, that's all I want, that's all we care about.
I think we can do that, but I'm sure there's only four, there's four individuals here tonight, unfortunately. There may be others out there that, again, this guy, for lack of a better term, excuse me, ladies, is sticking it to.
Yes.
Because he can't run his business the way we expect it to be run in Maryville. I got four residents here, how many more do we have in that Deluxe or the other one that Phil's run into?
Forty.
Where, that's where I get to, John? That's, this is where I get to where it's in my ward, believe me, if I had carte blanche, I'd be demanded to speak to these two attorneys with you present and saying, what is going on?
We have forty families.
I don't know that I can do that.
We've got people on disability. We've got people that have, like.
No vehicles.
No vehicles, or certain people that are, like, the church, the church will pay for them to stay. We got people like that. We got thirty families with children there, that's not including the elderly and all.
This is four this week, it's gonna be six in two weeks, it's gonna be ten when this gets closer. John, I understand what you're saying about Phil and the fire marshal, but you know what? We're the elected, this is my ward, these are the businesses in Ward Six, as well as the town. I don't think it's out of my privy to demand that we schedule a meeting with the attorneys for these hotels and find out what's going on. I'm sorry. That, I'm the elected official for that area, and I've got a problem where.
Sean, I think that we do need to sit.
We need to sit down with these attorneys and figure out what's going on with Phil and Ed there.
Exactly.
You know, I'm sorry, because it's gonna continue. These folks, we've tried to help out tonight, again, in two weeks.
In two weeks, we might have another thirty more people.
I mean, you said there's forty people in there?
Well, it sounds like we need a placement.
Need what?
Need a placement.
Well, we.
The ones there with families just are like us, they just weren't able to come. The ones there with kids just wanna get their kids to school.
Like, I have nowhere to go till the end of the school year. Like, he's finishing up truck driving school. I won't have the money to put down security deposit, NIPSCO and all that until he actually starts. The only way I'm staying afloat is because I'm working there that pays my rent. That's it. If I didn't have that, I'd be homeless.
We think we've got you till the end of the.
Yeah, we can get you through the end of the school year. It sounds like it's administratively what John and Phil are saying, but I think.
I think we need to have a sit down with the attorneys.
But I think we need to sit down with these guys. Whether Joe's guys are getting called out or Phil and the fire department are getting called out, they're stressing public safety.
Here's the problem they have, you know, as let's officials, we make these decisions to close this place like that. Now, we have a fire here tomorrow, shame on us because we didn't do nothing. We understand. That's what we're afraid of. Someone's gonna yell. You know, sometimes living in the streets is better than dying in a hotel with shelter. And this is what we don't want. We don't want anybody hurt or anybody get sick over there. We understand that.
Yeah, but we don't, I agree with what you're saying, but they got a six-year-old kid.
I have three, I have a six, six, five, and three.
Okay, so, okay, I thought all you, I thought all you guys were like one group.
Well, yeah.
No, no.
I have, I have a fourteen.
Oh, okay.
My fourteen-year-old is a straight A honor roll student in middle school.
And plus you've got people with disabilities in there, you can't. We've got the elderly and the maids. And we need to have someplace to. He's got Alzheimer's and dementia.
Here's what we need to do, I agree with Sean. The only thing that we can do is sit down with the attorneys.
Five hundred and fifty dollars a week.
Let's get these people, all you, everyone here is just waiting for school to be out.
Yes.
Am I understanding?
Yes.
Let's get these groups through that process because they gotta come before Bruce with a hearing for the business license anyway. Let's get that done. And, well, that's what Dorinda just said, Phil.
That's not necessarily true in matters of serious public life safety. I have the authority to close the building.
But we're not.
Phil is correct.
We're not, we're gonna wait till after school.
Thank you.
We're gonna wait till after.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
For your time, thank you.
Anybody else under public comment?
Like, something or four.
Is it?
Yeah.
She didn't even know, the attorney didn't even know there was a.
How are you guys? Good. I just wanted to introduce myself really fast. I'm Jarvis Joyner. I'm an engineer at Shoesbury Associates. Come here to introduce myself.
Tell Shrew hello.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, you know Bill Shoesbury?